If you have a cellphone device with you, as I'm reminding myself, I would ask you to take it out and put it on vibrate or silence, whatever you prefer to do. So I will begin our meeting tonight by asking the clerk to call the row.
Ms. Marshburn.
President.
Mayor Pro Tim Behringer.
Here.
Councilmember Matthews.
Here.
Councilmember Dellinger.
Here.
Councilmember Singleton.
Here.
Councilmember Vance.
Here.
Okay, thank you. Full house. Good. Thank you all. Sure enough. Okay, this time I'm gonna recognize Mayor Pro Tim Kathy Behringer, who will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and also in our invocation. If you can, please rise.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you would bow your heads with me. Father God, we come to you this evening with humble hearts and great needs. We need your wisdom, we need your guidance, as we consider issues brought before us, as we make decisions for our citizens and for the well-being of our town. Help us to be mindful of our need for each other's perspectives and to be respectful of those perspectives. We ask that you grant wisdom to our county, state, and national leaders. We know that no person has all the right answers, and we ask for grace for our elected officials to be able to work together. We pray for safety, for our armed forces, for our police, our firefighters, those people who keep us safe and free every day. And finally, we ask that you be creating our hearts a desire to work together for the good of all things. Amen.
Okay, thank you very much. And, let's see, I don't believe this is on the agenda, but Ms. Behringer is one of those fortunate people who is having a celebration, I understand, on Friday this week, so I won't ask her to get up and sing for us, but she's having a birthday, so those of you who get a chance to see her at the break or some other time can give her proper attention for that. Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, in all of our meetings, we have a time for petitions and comments. I won't read all the introductory remarks, but if you're here and you desire to appear before the council, now is the time to do that. Madam Clerk, I didn't receive any sign-up sheets, did you at all? Okay. So I'm assuming that there's no one who wishes to come forward at this time for any petitions or comments. Is that correct? Case hearing, hearing none. We will move along. Council, it's now time to adopt the agenda. What is your pleasure?
We adopt the agenda.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
A second is properly made. No further discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. And it's so ordered. Okay, next item of business is a presentation, and tonight, our presenter is none other than one of our own town staff, Ms. Gabby Lontos Lawler. And I believe, I can go ahead and introduce him, but he's a person that is known to most I was here, Mr. Het Patel. Good to see you back with us, Het. I believe you're part of the presentation. Is that right, sir?
Good to be back.
Okay, very good. Look forward to hearing from you. So, Ms. Gabby, if you will lead us off, we'll love to hear from you now.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the Town Council. We are here tonight to discuss some background on the Wake Transit Plan and to give you an overview of the kickoff for the Wake Bus Rapid Transit Southern Corridor. Before I get into the presentation, though, I'd like to introduce some of the project team members who are here with us tonight. And as Mayor already mentioned, Het Patel from the City of Raleigh is here, who some of you may recognize. Milla Vega from the City of Raleigh, and we have a couple of project members from the consultant WSP, Greg Sauer, and Rachel Gaylord Miles.
Welcome to you all. Thank you for being here.
So I'll start us off and give a little bit of an introduction of what the Wake Transit Plan was, what came out of it, and a quick overview of what Bus Rapid Transit is, and then I will hand this over to Het Patel, and he will go a little bit more in-depth into what the next steps are. So the Wake Transit Plan was passed in 2016, and Wake County residents approved it, a half-cent sales tax, which would go towards funding the projects that were identified through the Wake County Transit Plan. And so through the Wake County Transit Plan, you have four big moves or goals. First is to connect the region. The second is to connect all Wake County communities. The third is to provide frequent, reliable urban transit. And the fourth is to provide great access to transit, greater access to transit, excuse me. So these four big moves are accomplished through these key projects. The first is to improve bus service, and this is going to be accomplished by increasing frequency of bus service and expanding the reach of bus service, and also capital improvements such as improving bus stops and shelters. And then there is the planned 37-mile commuter rail system, which would connect Garner to, which would expand from Durham all the way to Garner. And then there is Bus Rapid Transit, which we are here to discuss tonight, and that would total approximately 20 miles. And there are four corridors that are planned. So what is Bus Rapid Transit? There are some key infrastructure and service elements that distinguish Bus Rapid Transit from your regular bus service. One of the main and most noticeable elements is a dedicated runningway, and there are several Bus Rapid Transit systems in the United States, but more premium services tend to have dedicated bus lanes which allow buses to operate faster because they're separated from general traffic, and they're able to avoid that congestion, and so that allows it to run faster and to be more reliable. Another key element is enhanced stations. So BRT stations have raised platforms which are able to align with the buses so that you have better accessibility for, you know, anybody that is on a wheelchair or anybody that has a stroller, for example. And so enhanced stations also include things such as ticket vending machines, real-time arrival information. And then you have specialized vehicles. The buses can range anywhere from your standard size, which is 40 feet, to 60 feet. So you can have any range in there. So the idea here is that you have increased capacity and you're able to fit more people than your traditional bus. Another key feature is branding. So having unique branding and designs make the buses and the stations more visible, which raises awareness and is able to distinguish BRT from your regular bus service. Another key element is transit signal priority, and this includes intersection improvements that allow buses to bypass the general traffic, again, improving on-time performance and Another element is the frequency of Bus Rapid Transit. Usually during peak hours, you have bus service every 10 to 15 minutes, and on off-peak hours or on weekends, you have it every 20 minutes. Longer span of service. So you have weekday service from 4:00 AM to 12:00 AM, which is a much larger window than what you usually have with your traditional bus service. And then enhanced fare collection system. Off-board fare collection allows for time savings because you don't have people getting on the bus and paying in cash, things like that, that hold up a bus and cause delays. So now I'm going to hand it over to Het Patel, and he's gonna walk us through the next steps.
Thanks, Gabby. Good evening, Mayor and Town Council members. Again, glad to be here in front of you in a different role, I guess, but glad to be here nonetheless. So Gabby explained to you what Bus Rapid Transit is. I'm going to walk you through the local and federal process of implementing Bus Rapid Transit projects and how we're doing that for the Wake BRT program. I'll walk you through some of the considerations that we currently have for the corridor that's a little bit more advanced in design, and then we'll talk about the Southern Corridor. So starting off, you have to have your route identified before you can initiate the project development with Federal Transit Administration. So that's kind of where we are right now with the Southern Corridor, and that's the first bubble that you see on this graphic. Right now, the Wake Transit Plan identified various alternatives for the different corridors, and so we'll be going through a public comment process, a public feedback process, as well as working with the elected officials that are involved in looking at the alternatives considerations and trying to identify a preferred route for the corridor. And since this is a multi-jurisdictional process, that's why I said we would be looking at both council approvals for the Southern Corridor. We would be coming back to Town of Garner Council to identify what their preferred route is within the Garner jurisdiction, and then City of Raleigh would, council would endorse the entire project as the project sponsor for Bus Rapid Transit. You can see the Western Corridor is also identified in that first graphic. Basically, we'll be going through the same process on the Western Corridor where Town of Cary, because their jurisdiction, the corridor extends into their jurisdiction, they will also be taking a similar action within their jurisdiction of identifying their preferred route, and Raleigh City Council would endorse the entire corridor. There is also the Wake Transit Plan concurrence process, which basically brings together cooperating agencies and partnering agencies that are touched by the BRT project. And so the cooperating agencies are the ones that have some jurisdictional control over the corridor, and they all have to concur at various steps in the process before the project continues to move forward. And that's one of the key steps to actually amending the Capillary Area MPO's Metropolitan Transportation Plan to identify a locally preferred alternative. So once we've done all of that work, that's when we write a letter to the Federal Transit Administration, identifying our project, identifying the purpose and need for our project, and basically detailing out some of the schedule considerations, and asking them to approve, or not approve, but basically receive the project as a federal project. Once we have gotten that authorization, that's when we move into the 0% to 30% design. That step is critical because once the Federal Transit Administration receives the project and gives us the go-ahead as it being a federally considered project, we would be eligible for future reimbursement on that project from that point onwards, from that date onwards. So some of the design costs that we incur from that point would be eligible for the federal reimbursement based on what we identify in our application when we get to that part. So getting into the design for 0% to 30%, that's when we would actually start looking at environmental documentation for the preferred alternative or the preferred route. We would start making some of the earlier BRT decisions on treatments of what type of dedicated lanes, where would the dedicated lanes go, preliminary locations for stations, and developing preliminary costs. We need that information to submit the project to the small starts rating application. The small starts rating application is basically where we submit the project to the Federal Transit Administration and ask them to rate it against other projects, as well as certain criteria that's identified in that application. And you need, at a level, you need a minimum to basically be eligible for federal funding. And there's various categories, and we can get to that when we actually move further along on the Southern Corridor. I just kinda wanted to outline what some of those steps are and what you'll be looking at as we move forward with the Southern Corridor. And then going into final design, that's when we would be locking down, you know, station locations, getting more construction cost estimates, and looking at Federal Transit Administration to initiate the discussions for getting the grant agreement if the project scores what it needs at the small starts rating level. So Gabby mentioned that the Wake Transit Plan identified four BRT corridors radiating from downtown Raleigh out in the four Cardinal Directions. So we have New Bern Avenue from downtown Raleigh going out towards New Hope, Southern Corridor going from downtown Raleigh out into Garner to Garner Station Boulevard and Perser Drive at the Walmart, the Western Corridor going from downtown Raleigh to downtown Cary, and the Northern Corridor going from downtown Raleigh up to about Crabtree Boulevard along two different alternatives. As I mentioned, the Wake BRT New Bern Avenue project is further along in its design. It was the first corridor that was decided to go through the project development process at FTA, through the FTA project development process. And so right now, we're at about 30% design on that corridor, and we will be moving towards doing some station site design plans in the fall of this year and looking to complete final design for the New Bern Avenue Corridor by the summer of 2021. The Southern and Western Corridors are running on parallel tracks from a project implementation perspective. Both of them are currently going through the route selection or identifying the locally preferred alternative process, and we were planning on submitting both of them to the Federal Transit Administration for project development consideration in summer of this year. And then the Northern Corridor would be the last corridor in line to start looking at the route selection in the fall of this year. So again, I just want to give you a quick overview of where the New Bern Avenue Corridor is, just so you can kinda get an idea of how the design progresses and how the Southern Corridor will go through some of those same steps. So being at 30% design on New Bern Avenue Corridor, we're able to say that, you know, from, we've broken the corridor down into three different segments, from downtown Raleigh up to about Tarboro and Pool Road, the BRT treatment that's identified is right business access and transit, which, what that means is there is a dedicated lane along the right side of the road for the buses to run in, but people are able to access that lane if they need to either go into a driveway, go into a business, access their home, access parking. So some of those movements can still happen, but they can't just drive in that lane for a long stretch of the corridor. Once you get to Segment 2, which is from about Raleigh Boulevard up to Wake Med, we are, we identified the median-running transit way. This is the truly dedicated BRT lanes where buses are the only thing, only vehicles allowed, and it's physically separated from automobile traffic. So this allows for what Gabby mentioned earlier, the more premium transit service where there are no conflicts with automobile vehicle and buses have their own right-of-way to operate within. And then the last segment, which is the mixed traffic, is really buses are operating in conditions they would currently be operating in. There are no BRT treatments, with the exception of transit signal priority would be at every signalized intersection. So that would allow the buses to get through intersections faster. And then the stations that are identified in that segment will still be BRT branded stations. They will still have the BRT amenities to incorporate the entire system. So some of the questions for New Bern Avenue that we've been receiving, this is a new concept for a lot of folks. So with the median-running transit way, how do you access the station? People are more used to walking up to the curbside, along the sidewalk, their bus comes, they get on the bus, and make their trip. When you have a station in the median, there are some considerations for how to get people to that station. So basically, you have Step 1, where you're at your typical intersection, and you press the crosswalk sign or the button, and you wait at the tactile strip. You wait for the audible announcement of it's okay to enter the crosswalk. Step 2 is you actually get into the crosswalk, headed towards the median, and then once you get to the median, you use the ADA ramp at the BRT station to get up to the station platform. You purchase your ticket, and you wait for the bus. And again, all of this is to help you complete some of the steps before the bus gets there, so when getting on and off the bus becomes a lot more efficient. So now I'm gonna shift the focus to the Southern Corridor and what we're really here for, which is to kick off the public process, public engagement process for the Southern Corridor and get some of your feedback on alternatives considerations. Here is a schedule for the route selection, which we're calling the LPA Selection Study. Previous planning from 2017 and 2019, Gabby's kind of gone into some of that. City of Raleigh had completed the Southern Gateway Study in 2017. Garner Forward Comprehensive Plan and Transportation Plans were completed in 2018, and then the Wake Transit Major Investment Study was also completed in 2018. So we've looked at some of those documents and what their recommendations were for the Bus Rapid Transit Corridor along the Southern alignment. And then we initiated in December of 2018 the LPA Selection Study. We've had a few workshops internally with the Town of Garner staff, City of Raleigh staff, NCDOT staff, to sort of start looking at this corridor in more detail. And so we are here today now to, one, advertise the public meeting kickoffs, as well as get some of your feedbacks on the alternatives. The plan for this corridor is to try to get a route selected by spring 2020, maybe sometime early April, and have the federal project development initiation letter sent to FTA in the summer so that we can begin design on that selected route in the summer of this year. And then we would have additional rounds of public meetings as we go into design as I'm not gonna dwell too much further into the previous planning efforts. As I mentioned, we've looked at the reports and recommendations from each one of these and the MIS. So the MIS is the first part where the corridor was identified with three different alignment options in the northern section coming out of downtown Raleigh, which includes South Wilmington Street, which is G on the map, South Saunders Street, which is E, and South McDowell Street, which would be F. And then two alignment options, once you get to about Chapin Oak Road, just past the South Wilmington flyover where South Saunders and South Wilmington kinda come in together. There are two alternatives. One would be the Fayetteville Road, which is US 401, and that's I on the map, and South Wilmington Street Extension, which would be a new roadway construction, that's H on that map. So basically, with the three alignment options up north and then the two alignment options in the southern section, we really have an option of six different ways of making this corridor work. So alignment, or alternative one would be, you have, I'm gonna try to click. So alternative one would be, you have South Saunders Street going down to the Wilmington Extension. Alternative 2 would be South Saunders Street, but then you stay on Fayetteville Road for the southern portion. Alternative 3 would be taking McDowell to South Saunders and then going to the Wilmington Extension. Alternative 4 would be staying on McDowell, South Saunders, onto Fayetteville Road. And then alternative 5 would be Wilmington Street with Wilmington Street Extension. Alternative 6 is Wilmington Street with Fayetteville Road. So I'm gonna actually zoom into the southern section, just so we can have a better look at sort of the turn of Town of Garner jurisdiction piece of the alternatives. And some of the major considerations here, again, are the South Wilmington Street Extension, which would be a new roadway construction, or staying on Fayetteville Road and 401. And one of the things that came out of the design workshop that we had with Town of Garner staff was this dotted optional route that you see along Garner Station Boulevard. That was identified with some changes that had happened after the Garner Comp Plan and some of the development that's been identified since some of these previous studies that happened. We'd identified a route that would make a little bit more sense instead of cutting through some of those properties on the southern piece of Garner Station Boulevard, and that would stay on the existing corridor. And actually, you know, either, any of the alternatives could really do that southern terminus loop the way it's drawn out in the dotted line. So in terms of alternatives considerations, we've identified eight categories that we're looking at for evaluating these alternatives. What are the traffic volumes? What are the average daily cars that are traversing the corridor? What are potential bicycle pedestrian connections that the alignment can make along the corridor? What is the need for additional right-of-way? What type of BRT ridership can each alternative provide? Construction costs? Implementation timeframe, you know, how long will it take? Depending on which alternative you select, it varies. The economic development opportunities along the different alternatives vary as well. And then the last one is, the Major Investment Study process actually did go through a lot of public engagement as well. And so we have some numbers from that, some feedback from that, that we're presenting in this round of public engagement to see if people still feel the same way. And so I've kinda simplified the alternatives consideration. If you come out to the public meeting, you'll see some of the boards that we have broken down for each alternative, 1 through 6, and we have a little sliding scale that shows for each one of those categories I identified where that alternative falls. For the conversation today, I really just wanted to highlight some of the key takeaways on these different alternatives, and we would bring back some of the more detailed analysis to you when we come for more of a LPA Selection Workshop type of a presentation. So Wilmington Street and South Saunders Street, sorry, Wilmington Street, has lower car traffic. There are more potential bike-ped connections. The construction costs, implementation schedule, and environmental documentations are less intensive because the right-of-way exists. It's, there's plenty of right-of-way along the corridor there. The South Saunders Street, McDowell Street, if I go back to this visual on the MIS, you know, I combine them because the majority of these two alignments are pretty much operating within the same area. The only difference is this little segment on that northern piece coming into downtown. So from a considerations perspective, there aren't a lot of variations to that alignment, those two alignments. So there is more higher traffic on those corridors, less potential bike-ped connections, but also, again, continuing the lower cost, shorter implementation schedule, and less intensive environmental documentation. Moving on to the Fayetteville Road alternative, which is the southern piece, in the southern portion and within the Town of Garner jurisdiction, there is higher traffic volumes and more conflicts with bike-ped connection options. Again, lower construction costs because the right-of-way is there. We'd probably be operating in mixed right-of-way, shorter implementation schedule, and less intensive environmental documentation for those same reasons. And then the Wilmington Street Extension is the new road construction that's been identified in Raleigh Street plans, as well as Garner Comprehensive and Transportation Plans. Again, there would be virtually less or no, less traffic volumes on that corridor when constructed. More options for bike-ped connections, but there are significantly higher construction costs, a lot longer implementation schedule, and more intensive environmental documentation because of the new roadway construction. And we just want to highlight another thing that is, with the Wilmington Street Extension, if there is a need or desire to have general purpose lanes along with the transit lanes, there would need to be a funding source identified, both within the City of Raleigh jurisdiction portion and the Town of Garner jurisdiction, to fund that general purpose lanes, because federally, Federal Transit Administration projects or transit projects would not fund general purpose vehicular lanes. So the last bit of... So the last bit of my presentation today is really just the kickoff meetings that we have for the southern corridor. We are at Garner Senior Center this Thursday from 4:00 to 7:00 PM with the presentation at 5:30. And then, we will be at Victory Church on South Wilmington Street on February 24th, again, 4:00 to 7:00 PM with a presentation at 5:30. I've also identified some other future public engagement opportunities that are related to BRT projects within the City of Raleigh. There's the Equitable Development on Transit Project, it's going to have two meetings in February. And then, in April, we will be having some meetings on the next steps for New Bern Avenue Project, as well as the western corridor. So at this point, I'm done with my presentation, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Patel. Quick question, then I'll turn it over to the council members. These meetings, like the one at Senior Center, are essentially designed for just sort of drop-in meetings unless one wants to be there for the formal presentation. If so, then one needs to be there at 5:30. That'll last approximately, how long would you say?
The presentation will last approximately 20 minutes. That's what we try to shoot for. And you are correct, they are open house style meetings, so there's, the setup is complete at 4:00 PM and people can walk in, look at the boards. We have, you know, 13, 14 boards laid out with the information on those alternatives considerations and wait for the presentation if they want, or if they feel like they've gotten some of the information they were there for, they could, you know, leave at that point. But there are other ways of providing opportunities as well. We will have an online survey that will be published as soon as the Monday meeting probably ends. That will have the same type of feedback opportunity.
I'll start with my left hand here and see if Mr. Matthews has any questions.
Not this time. Yes, so hit, on the options, the Wilmington Street, Saunders, McDowell, and Fayetteville Road options, does that mean that you had existing right-of-way? Does that mean you add new lanes, or what would, how would you, to construct the BRT lanes on those alternatives?
So, once we get a alternative identified as the preferred alternative, when we get to the 0% to 30% design, that's when we start looking at some of the trade-offs between where you might be able to repurpose a lane. And, you know, if there is not a lot of vehicular traffic, you could use one of the vehicular lanes to add the BRT lane there. If there is enough additional right-of-way, you could potentially construct new BRT lanes. So when we get to having an LPA identified, that's when we will be looking at some of those design considerations and the next step of the process.
Okay, so if the Wilmington Street Extension is considered or chosen, will that extension be just for BRT, or will it be for BRT and also other traffic to use?
So I think that is one of the considerations that Town of Garner Council needs to weigh in on, as well as City of Raleigh. In the transportation plans, the Raleigh Street Plan, it has been identified that it would be a, it would also include general purpose lanes, but that's the one where I added the asterisk that said, for general purpose lanes, we'd have to also identify funding and where that's coming from.
We told them new construction, as you also mentioned, I think some environmental issues will be rather expensive.
Well, it would just take, it would, it could be more expensive in terms of taking a lot longer to complete the environmental documentation, because you go in from, if you're staying within right-of-way and not making a lot of significant changes to the infrastructure, from an FTA environmental documentation perspective, you can get it done with a categorical exclusion. If you're going to be making a new roadway construction, then you're into a environmental assessment or EIS category, so.
What does that mean for the audience?
So is it?
What does that mean for the audience, what you said?
It just means that you are looking at a lot of environmental features at, in more significant detail, along the new roadway construction, whereas you wouldn't be doing a lot of that work on the roads that already exist, because they're there and you're not making a lot of environmental impacts.
I believe what's on the news last week, whether some funding, federal funding was approved for one of the alternatives, was it New Bern Avenue?
Yes, so that's the piece where, when I was talking about the local and federal process, in August of 2018, we submitted the New Bern Avenue BRT project into the small stars ratings to get it rated, and it received a medium-high rating, which means it is eligible for federal funding.
So you got the funding, and so now you have work to do, so when do you, regarding that particular route, when do you think, through design, implementation, when might there be bus rapid transit on that particular route, since you have some funding approved?
So.
Just to clarify.
Yeah.
I just, I'm sorry, Mila Vega with the City of Raleigh, just to clarify, ratings just determines eligibility. We don't know if the project gets funded yet. We will find out sometime in the summer fall of this year. So it is eligible, it passed the threshold, but now the next step is to actually find out if we get the money this year, next year, and when is it going to be available. We are hoping it will be this year, but until federal government tells us it's available, we are still in the waiting mode.
Eligible to get funded, you just don't know when?
Yes.
So we don't know when Santa Claus is coming for that particular project? Gotcha. I'm just curious, I didn't notice, I'm reading the story, I believe there's one or seven Chapel Hill area that got, I'm assuming that's the same type thing, it's eligible, but funding hadn't been approved?
Yes.
Okay.
That's accurate. And we anticipate, like Mila said, to find out summer of this year to fall 2020, if it gets funded.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, if you have anything, Ms. Berger. Mr. Vance.
Yes, sir. In reference to the public meetings you're having, how long is the public comment period going to be?
So we typically have the public comment period open for two weeks after the public meeting, and the online survey, we keep it open for about three weeks after the public
Okay, Mr. Dallinger.
One of the background questions, does Go Raleigh and Go Triangle, they already have mobile express transit integration with phones and things like that?
So there is a separate project that just got approved through the Wake Transit Plan that's looking at mobile ticketing. And I think they're working with a vendor right now to sort of iron out some of the details, but that should be coming online later this year.
This would be included in that, when it launches?
Yeah, so for Bus Rapid Transit, the next step for New Bern, as we go into 30% to 100% design, is actually look at concept of operations, some fair collection policies, and setting some other system standards. That's where we look at how, whatever, what the local buses are doing, that infrastructure, how that can get integrated into the BRT system to make sure it's a seamless process.
The other question I have is, what are Garner's obligations and costs on these different routes? The other one, I saw that there was some general purpose lanes, there'd need to be funding found for that, but for the general operation of the lines, what is the town's obligation?
For the general operations and constructions, again, outside of that caveat for that general purpose lanes, this project was identified through the Wake Transit Plan, and so, there is funding set aside from the Wake Transit Plan for construction and operations and implementation. If it's strictly just a transit project, once some of the other components get added, and if there's other things that, you know, other decisions that are made that require something that cannot be funded through Wake Transit Plan, or federal funds as a match or reimbursement, then the local funding discussions need to be had.
And the other question is Wilmington Street Extension, how many properties and businesses are affected by that route?
I do not have the actual number of the property impacts, but we can certainly get that to you when we come back with a more detailed alternatives consideration presentation. We have done some preliminary look at potential costs, right-of-way costs and stuff, but we don't, I don't have the number.
Maybe it's implied, but I guess we're not talking about express service from point A to point B, it stops along the way, or?
Yes.
Do we know essentially how many, or where they will be?
So the MIS actually identified a few stops, those are the black dots that you see. Once we actually get into 0% to 30% design, we can identify if there, so right now, you know, it looks like there's more stops along alternative one and, or along the option that is going through South Saunders, because there are some stops within downtown. But once we look at 0% to 30% design and an LPA selected, we can identify if there is any need to have stops somewhere in between the current stops identified. The typical stop spacing for BRT projects is about half a mile.
Half a mile.
Half a mile, yeah. But in more dense environments, you could have stops a little bit closer, if you're trying to connect to more things, but typically, it's about half a mile.
Logistical, how do they turn around when they get to the end of a route?
And so, for New Bern, what we're looking at is, it's going to use the existing Walmart stop as one stop, and then, there's going to be a park and ride. So once we have a LPA selected, once the route is identified, that's when we would look at potential opportunities of how that bus would make the turnaround at the end of the trip.
So the initial process would be identifying this route, and we'd be further down the road of ways before other routes or other stops would be added to this, is that right?
Yes, the initial consideration really is to figure out what alignment or what route you want to be on. It's South Wilmington to Fayetteville, or South Wilmington to South Wilmington Street Extension, or South Saunders to Fayetteville, and South Saunders to Wilmington Street Extension. Once we have that locked down, then we can take a closer look in detail with the stop spacing along those alternatives, what kind of development is along the alternatives, and where some stops make sense.
Bill, do you have any?
Yes, like the designated stops that you've got highlighted here. In the event, that's the only places a person can get on BRT, is that the only place they can exit off the BRT, or can they get off at any place, any time?
So the BRT stops are, because of the way the services structure operates, it stops at every stop, and it, for efficiency purposes, I think those are the only opportunities you have to get on and off, is the designated BRT stops. But typically, what you also have is local bus service connecting to BRT stations in strategic areas. So that's where, if you're trying to go to a certain place, you would transfer over to the local bus.
So after this presentation tonight, which we thank you very much for, what will we be hearing from you or some of the other consultants at a set time in the future?
Yeah, so I think after this presentation, our next step really is to have the kickoff meetings, get some feedback from the public from the kickoff meetings, and work with Town of Garner staff to identify another date, you know, in late March, early April, to come back to you with the findings from the public meetings, as well as the detailed analysis of the alternatives considerations, to hopefully, at that point, have that discussion of which route you would prefer.
One more question. Why, I see that all the alternatives, why was like a 401, then turning down Garner Station Boulevard and coming back around not considered an alternative, an option?
And so, I think when I got to that presentation, that piece, I did say, you could end up doing 401 to Garner Station as the loop, as a southern terminus. That is a decision we can make if the Fayetteville Road is the selected route. We can still make that decision when we get to 0% to 30% design. And that's something that actually could be favorable.
No, you got it. And that's an opportunity, when we were talking about adding stations, that's an opportunity to add another station if you get that loop and you would like to serve that area. So that's a connection. It is not shown on the map, but you're correct, that's one of the considerations that we will be showing and discussing with you.
Okay, any other questions, comments? I would, thank you for coming. I'm, I'm pretty excited about this, been hearing about it for a while, and we're starting to get to the, as we used to say out in the country, the short roads on this, hopefully, and I think it'll be a big boost for our citizens here, including your mayor, who's got to get out there and get some trial runs in.
Yep.
Even on the current system, I guess, but, so we look forward, hopefully, I'll see you at the, maybe at the Senior Center.
Yes, sir.
On Thursday, and look forward to having you back.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Okay, thank you very much. I think the next item on our agenda is approval of the consent agenda. Do I have a motion from my council to approve the consent agenda?
The move.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no, and there are none, so it is approved. Okay, we have no scheduled public hearings this evening, so we'll go to old and new business. Oh, did you, yeah, okay. Let me see, Mr. Roy Lance is up. Contract approval for space needs study.
All right, thank you very much. Yep. We're here to talk tonight about the request for approval of funding and the contract for the space needs study. And we've talked about this a little bit in terms of a potential bond project, but just to remind you, when we talk about looking at some space needs, in this case, we're really talking about three main areas. One is the Public Works Campus on Ram mill Road, the series of buildings that make up our existing Public Works facility. The other is our large evidence storage area for Police Department. And then, the third is the general file storage area that's currently housed in Pearl Street. Each of those locations and facilities have some challenges associated with them. The Public Works Campus, some of those buildings are just old and at the end of their life. We also are bursting at the seams to some degree, so even if the buildings weren't getting dated, we would need more space anyway. And so, those are some of the challenges we're looking at there. The Police Large Evidence Storage, mostly just looking for a facility that's probably a little bit bigger and also has more of the modern standards that you would expect for an evidence storage facility. And then, the File Storage Area in Pearl Street is currently adequate, but with the relocation of the depot, there's, you know, some possibility in the future that that space might be better used for some other purpose. And so, if we needed to move all the file storage that's currently at Pearl Street, where would we put it? So those are the three things that we wanted to look at, and those three things could interrelate, but they don't necessarily have to. As far as why we're doing this study, basically, because paying for these projects might be something that you all want to consider in an upcoming bond referendum. So later this summer, when we talk about what might we do with the November 21 proposed bond referendum, we wanted to make sure that you had some good information on what these projects might look like, what the cost would be, and so on, so that you could factor that into your decision-making. These are not projects that we've spent a lot of time talking about before at a staff level, and so, we feel like by hiring a professional, we could get a much more reliable cost estimate. So our goal is to give you the best information we can, so that when the time comes to actually build it, whether it's part of this bond referendum or not, but the information that we have will be the best that we can. We're not going to be able to have a final estimate, because we aren't going to get that much into the design of it, but we would have at least a reasonably accurate estimate that, you know, as good as we can get at this stage of the designs, so you'll have good information for your decision-making. And the other reason that we're doing this study is because that's a, there's three different buildings, and there's, potentially, there's different locations, there's a lot of different combinations, you know, these could possibly all be co-located together. It's also possible that they'll be in different places. The existing Public Works Campus is not very big from an acreage standpoint, so, you know, could you even expand on that existing site? Do you need to go to a whole nother site? Maybe you keep some Public Works functions at that site, and you have a satellite location. And if, you know, if you did that, where, you know, would you have the file storage at one of those other sites? And there's just a bunch of different combinations. So it's one of those things that, it's, it's not that complicated, but there are, it gets more complicated than you might think because of all those different factors that go into it. So let me tell you a little bit about the selection process. We issued a request for proposals, or probably be more accurate to call it a request for qualifications. We got six firms that responded. We had a team of staff members from administration, Public Works, Police, and Finance, including Forrest Jones, who's here, and Joe Benz, and David Beck. So we evaluated all six responses. Two of the six firms were really close, and so, we brought those two firms in for an interview, and we ended up selecting. and we ended up selecting the IBI Group, and Mark Humany is here, he's representing the IBI Group tonight. And so then, we negotiated the project scope and the price with IBI. And that's, it's attached in your packet, if you'd like some more detail on it, but it's basically five phases. The first is to assess the, our current facilities, just basically understand what exists now. The second part, well, and I should add on the first part, we do have some existing facility assessment data that they're going to be able to take advantage of, but we don't have that for all of these sites. So, they'll use that when they can, and they'll go out and do some of their own assessment and data collection as well. The second phase is the architectural programming, so, you know, once they understand what the status quo looks like, you know, what, start to figure out, what do we really need, how much space, what's our growth going to look like, you know, what things need to be next to one another, and they'll also spend a lot of time here, talking to staff and the existing building users about how they use the facility, and what they would like to see, and how it could work better, and that kind of thing. The third part is, you know, once you know what the building needs to look like, or the space needs to look like, you can start to play with a little bit of the design, you know, what would the, how would you fit it on a site, what kind of space, some very simplistic design elements, you know, again, we're not designing the whole building. One of the interesting things that this firm does is this concept called parametric design, which is basically just some computer modeling, and that's something that we've not had, at least to my knowledge, is not something that we've done on a project like this before. It's through a new approach, so they, the computer model will generate many, many different potential design options that we can then, you know, narrow down and see what that might look at. And you'll get to see the results of that at the end, when we, we all will get to see, because I haven't seen it either, but that'll be something that you all get to see in the final report and presentation. And then, the last two phases are the cost estimation, you know, once we get a sense for which design concept makes the most sense, what would it cost, and then presenting that work to you all, so you'll have that information when it comes time to do, making bond decisions and that kind of thing. So, the total cost for the project is just under $100,000. I mentioned before, there's a lot of different scenarios. We had to make some assumptions in the scope of work about how many different scenarios and combinations they would run. So, we think we've got that number right. On the off chance that we need another scenario, it would be an extra $6,000, but we feel like we're probably going to be good with the number that we've got in there. And then, the last thing I wanted to mention is this, there's not a dedicated funding source, there's not a funding source that was identified in the budget for this project, and so we would propose to just take the money out of fund balance. It's a one-time expense, and we have done that from time to time on these other sort of planning projects that help put the pieces together for a future bond. If that's not your preference, we would need to identify another place to take the money from, because it's not something that's budgeted. So, with that, I'll take any questions, and if also, if, you know, you'd like to hear from our, the representative from the consultant, Mark Humany, or any of the other team members, they're also here, but I'll stop there and see if you have any questions.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Matt, for that presentation. Let me see, I'll get everybody, go ahead, Gray, start with you.
Just to confirm the schedule, we're talking about, based off this, two, four, six, eight, four, twelve, twelve weeks, so we're talking three to four months. Correct, right, twelve to sixteen weeks.
That's right.
Okay. And if we approve it tonight, which I'm assuming we will, the notice to proceed will be, is that immediate, or we got to sign the contract, execute the contract?
Well, I mean, we think we've got the meat of all that worked out, but we would have to get the actual contract form signed, so are a couple of additional steps. So, you probably would need to build in a little bit of time before the notice to proceed happens, but we're pretty close.
Sometime in late May, or sometime in June, the summer, we'll have this information.
Yes.
Okay. Wanted to know exactly what the timeframe was. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, sir. I will skip all the way to my right to Mr. Dallinger down here and work my way back down. Nothing? Okay. Mr. Vance? Behringer?
Nothing.
Uh, Mr. Matthews?
Singleton asked a question I was concerned about, so I'm good to go.
Okay.
Well, ask a question. The existing Public Works Facility, I believe, was dedicated in 82, 83, 81, somewhere in there? In 1980, so it's 40-plus years old. It's served us well, but I know you need a lot more space. Modern, updated space.
Mayor, just one question. We went down that road, and it had, like I said, it has served us well, but, and I'm probably getting a little ahead of what we're going to be doing here, but do, what's, it looks more realistic, we're going to have to go to another location due to limited land over there, with the rate of growth we're experiencing in Public Works over there. I know you've got every square inch taken over there right now.
Yeah, I mean, are you, yeah, I mean, I think that's the whole point of doing this study, is we're not 100% sure. There are some pretty significant limits to what else we could do on that site. I mean, we, maybe there's some adjoining land nearby that we could do something with, but it's really too soon to say, is how I would answer that. I don't know if you have anything?
That is very fair. I mean, it's, our site, really, I don't know that our existing site and property we own has any more potential, what we've got. There is some land around us, but, you know, how much do we need? Is it sufficient? How much of it's available? There's a lot of questions that still be answered.
Right.
Okay. Yeah, and I was gonna note, just as a comment, I don't remember exactly the scope of the study we did, but I noticed there's a statement here, it says, "This is a more complicated study than we did for Town Hall," so I guess that's understood, since, since in some ways it's a larger footprint, and we have places scattered here and there and about, or at least, you know, Public Works, and I'm trying to think of other areas we look at as well.
I think one thing that makes us unique, our current campus consists of about two main buildings, but yet we have a total of about seven shelters and other things, so we just, we've got a lot of moving parts and pieces. So, you know, Public Works is unique in that it comes to work, and a lot of its work is other places. So, we have a lot of storage needs, a lot of that kind of opportunities, and just, you know, then general traffic flow from Fuel Islands, and then your mechanic shop is, it's truly a large piece of it as well, which has some diverse needs as well.
I think of even your, you know, your workover, our parks, which are some distance, obviously, from your headquarters office, but you have some equipment over there, I guess you transport it back and forth.
We do, all of our equipment is housed at Public Works. It makes a trip every day.
Okay. All right, thank you, Matt. Anybody else? Let's see, do we need to officially vote to approve this? I guess we do, don't we, or not?
Yes.
Yeah. Consider approving contract with IBI Group to form a space needs. Anybody want to hear from IBI? He gets a pass tonight, it sounds like, but we'll be certainly looking forward to hearing from him once this contract is signed, and we get the process underway. So, if you think you're ready to vote, I'm going to ask for a motion.
Mayor, we approve the contract with IBI Group, and ask staff to go ahead and execute it and start immediately.
Second.
Okay. Motion properly made and seconded. Any other questions and or comments before we vote?
One quick question. There'll be a time completion, a time certain for completion in that contract, correct?
Yes.
Okay. That's what I just want to be clear on.
Okay. Any others? All right, if you're ready to vote, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Any opposed? I don't believe there are any, so the motion passes, and we'll look forward to getting the process underway. Thank you very much, Mr. Roy Lance. Okay, thank you, sir, for being here. Okay, the next item of business is Item J, Committee Reports. I'm gonna, I'm gonna start there, and just for informational purposes to council, just to remind you that we have put together a couple of what I call subcommittees. One committee is looking at the issue of our attorney needs. You all know Mr. Baggett is our interim attorney, and he's serving as well, but, so we've had at least one meeting, maybe a couple. Staff is doing still some background information, comparing notes with some other municipalities. We will be meeting again, I believe, sometime, probably in the next week to 10 days. Ms. Behringer's serving on that committee along with some staff, and so I can't say for certain, but I would anticipate we would be looking to bring some recommendation back to the full council within the next month to six weeks or so. Is that a reasonable estimate, Mr. Manager?
Yeah, that should be, plenty to bring something back, yes.
Yeah, okay. So, that's just a quick update on that. Another committee that is, that is meeting, has met, and will meet again, is a committee relating to the continuation of our Christmas parade. Again, we met in January, at least once, maybe more than that, and we will have another meeting this month, I believe, before February is out, probably. Again, the staff is doing some research, looking at possible options as it relates to this particular issue. Again, we won't put a firm date on it, but I'm thinking we're expecting to bring something back to council. I'm going to use the term by early spring, or thereabouts. Mr. Manager, am I overly optimistic, or?
Yeah, it, I mean, some of that's going to depend on what issues we might want to look at, and whether we might want to have a attorney, maybe look at some of the things we're talking about doing. Likely, we'll not have a police chief to weigh in, but at some point, you know, a police chief is going to weigh in on, you know, the permanent police chief is going to want to weigh in on what the plan is, so.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it could take some time, but it'll definitely be well in advance of the parade time, so yes.
Yes, all right. So, wanted to make council aware of those efforts. They are underway. Maybe if the public is asking, you can certainly respond by indicating that those are active committees, and things are under active consideration. So, those are the one, the two committees that I wanted to mention. I will now defer to other council members who are either serving on committees or liaison to committees, if you want to, if you have any reports under committee reports. We'll go to council reports in a few minutes, but are there any other committee reports? Okay, hearing nine. We will go to manager reports.
Yeah, you have in your packet the, just the standard Garner info, and you'll see there's a number of junk car reports in there, we're working, continue to work those, and there's a building and permit report that talks about some of the building activity we've had, permits, and things of that nature. And just a reminder, again, about the BRT public meeting, February the 20th, from 4:00 to 7:00, and that's going to be at the Garner Senior Center for public input. Other thing we have is typically around this time, we would have the employee pancake breakfast, in which the council prepares breakfast for staff, so want to start looking at those dates. Could be in March, we have had it as late as, I think, May before, but probably want to try to have it sooner rather than later. Typically, you know, start early morning, probably maybe a Thursday, I think it was on a Thursday last year, so. We can put some dates together and shoot those out to you, so you can comment on them, so we don't have to try to work it out here, right now, and that could be cumbersome. But, any issues with a Thursday? Maybe a Thursday morning, does that work good as a start for everybody?
It's a good starting place, as far as I'm concerned, and for those who are new on the council, you may be aware of this, but this has become a tradition, and I think is a good one to continue, where council, with the assistance some of our chief clerk and others, usually gets here early and prepares breakfast for the staff. It's quite a nice event, and I'm always amazed at the cooks we have. Mr. Singleton, in particular, I know he's pretty good with the eggs, specialty, I believe, and some others, but at any rate.
Nobody's gotten sick yet, so.
Yeah, that's right.
Hadn't dove their head.
Do any council members have any question about this? And I understood you say, Mr. Manager, that you will send out some proposed dates and let us sort of?
Yeah, I think that'd be the easiest way to handle it, just.
Probably will be.
If we could start with a Thursday, we'll look at some of the Thursdays that are open over the next month or so.
Okay. Yeah, all right.
Mayor, can I ask Mr. Dickerson a couple of questions about the Garner info?
Sure.
Rodney, on two, there's one dated from August and one from September, and they both say in progress. I just didn't know if we'd made progress on one, particularly the second one. I would think the second one would have been easier, the first one I can see maybe taking some time, but you got those two, and the other ones are all this year, except the one in late December.
One about rock climbing structure. Is that the one you're looking at?
Rock climbing structure is breaking, yes.
In the process of replacing some equipment, playground, I think it hasn't been replaced yet, but.
Yeah, so we had some struggles, and that's one thing, this doesn't show as the updates. We had some challenges with our current vendor, trying to get a replacement piece for it. We have since found another vendor to offer us a differing, a different type of play structure, so we have that on order, and our target is to try to have that in place and installed by Extravaganza. That's kind of our target.
Thank you for.
That'll stay on there until it's replaced. And then, you know anything about the yard waste limbs on Hilltop? It's probably been taken care of, it just hasn't been updated.
I'll look at that, I'll look at that this evening.
Yeah, I was wondering, I thought that one, since it was, it might have been taken care of, but yeah, but I appreciate you down on the, on the equipment, Extravaganza, I think is the first weekend in April, so that's good.
That's our target.
Okay, great, thank you.
If everything shows up.
Thank you.
And we had some public input on the Lake Drive project as it pertains to the Highway 50 bridge, and I'll let John give you an update on that.
So, we did hold a public meeting for all the neighbors around the Dulles Circle and Lake Drive area last week. That is a project that council, that was previously on the council, and new council members may be aware, but a project that council asked us to look at improving Lake Drive as a part of the Highway 50 bridge replacement, because it was going to take, the bridge is going to take away one of the points of access for that neighborhood, and there's concerns about the narrowness of the street, and it icing in the winter and so forth. We did take the preliminary designs to meet with the neighborhood. We did get a lot of feedback from the neighbors that they have concerns about the addition of sidewalks, and how much area that is taking away from property owners, and especially one large property owner. And so, listening to all the input from the citizens, staff is going to work with the designer to come back with a couple of options, bring those back to council, and we'd also like to ask council's approval to notice that as not necessarily a public hearing, but a public comment period, so that the folks that are in that neighborhood are ensured that they've got an opportunity to express any concerns they have to council. We've not always had a situation where we've needed to bring an item back to you that was under design after hearing public comment, so this is a little out of the normal process, but staff believes it's probably a good process for us to start actually programming into our process, and so with your approval, we will test it out by bringing the Lake Drive back with options and allowing public comment, and then after that, we can get your input on how you'd like to see that happen more formally in the future.
That's your question, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
In particular, John, on that item, was there, was there, is proposed, or the initial plan was to have sidewalks on both sides of Lake Drive, or just one side?
One side.
One side.
And I think some of the issues is the addition of sidewalk, if it is designed toward, to our typical cross-section, takes quite a bit of right-of-way from one significant property owner and some others, and one of the several people's comments were it was a section of sidewalk that then stopped, and there's no sidewalk within the neighborhood it was connecting to. So, the neighbors gave the impression that they would rather give up the sidewalk to save the impacts, to lessen the impacts, since it was not really providing an amenity that connected two segments of sidewalk together.
Sidewalk in that, commute in that neighborhood?
That was my understanding, so I think, I don't know if, the Dulles may have it, the newer homes, but the rest of it did not, and so they did not see the value in the addition of that.
Yeah, the older section of, of, my mind just went blank, St. Mary's, no, not St. Mary's.
Hilltop.
Hilltop, thank you, yes, I know that, that's unimproved, that's, that's unimproved as this Lake Drive, okay.
Right.
Good, so you bring some options.
We'll bring options, and then as we present those to you, we'll get your input on how to do that on a more formal basis, if you desire that.
A quick, excuse me, question. Are there sidewalks going to be added as part of this bridge replacement down Benson Road?
There are, because the town added sidewalks to Main Street. Those will get reconfigured with the bridge, but replaced, and then the sidewalk, there will be sidewalks added as a part of the bridge project, part the way down toward Lake, and the town added, at the town's expense, has added sidewalks from wherever they were going to terminate. going to terminate to go down to the apartments at Bryan Woods.
On the, on the west side?
On the west side, but that is a betterment that the town is choosing to make, to make a, a better connection. And so then the sidewalk we're proposing for Lake would connect to sidewalk on 50. It's just a matter of the, the trade-off of connecting back to the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anything else?
The other thing I had is, um, we sent out, uh, Mr. Royalens sent out a proposed schedule of some meetings, uh, including a retreat and some various other topics we were going to carry, um, uh, and just to see if there was any comment or any, um, you know, just talk about the dates. Well, you know, one was the lines of business proposed, maybe in March 18th to 19th, and then have a council retreat, April the 1st and 2nd, and then we would have a budget, our regular budget, CIP work sessions would start in May like they normally do, and then the strategic plan update would be in August, and then September, we would start identifying bond projects and, um, looking at that bond capacity. But I guess for the more immediate future would be the lines of business and then the council retreat. How you felt about that? I don't know if we...
Retreat in April, is that what you're thinking about?
Yeah, um, council has a desire, desire to have a typical retreat, so we've looked at, you know, potentially doing that April 1st and 2nd. And then that, we would bring in a facilitator, um, to do some sessions. Uh, we could cover, um, get an update on, from Davenport on the bond capacity. Uh, we got a compression study that we need to bring to you, and then, um, potential to talk about some legislative changes, and, um, if there's any other items from when we would normally have a March work session, we can talk about some of those also, but...
Mr. Manager, can you remind me the date of that email? I'm sure I got it, but I...
Uh, let's see.
Do you have it handy, first?
Was it first? I'm sorry. Yeah, um, Wednesday, it came in Wednesday, the 12th, February 12th.
Oh, okay.
I've got some hard copies if that would, if that would help you guys.
Mind passing me down one? I, I usually try to print those out, but for some reason not. Yeah. Okay, yeah. Decontaminated. Thank you.
Smart man, make copies.
Yeah. Okay, thanks, Matt. Okay, uh, Mr. Manager, that is...
There's anything else you want to say about it, Matt? That's fine if there's...
Well, no, just that we, I mean, we, we threw out some proposed dates because it seemed like they generally made sense, uh, and we would want to get some confirmation relatively soon because, A, I know you all would like to work these things into your own calendars and, uh, and B, we need to firm up facilitators if we're going to have them, so, um, e- either tonight or, you know, in the next day or so, if you could maybe get in touch with us about whether these dates work for you, that would be very helpful.
Okay.
And any comments you have on the subject matter listed under each one?
Yeah, for me, uh, excuse me again, um, the, the dates look good. Um, as we're going through the lines of business for, uh, the different departments, we had sort of an orientation, but what I'd like is to have those departments kind of analyze their line of business from a perspective of the strategic plan and also from sort of a SWA analysis of their strengths and weaknesses and opportunities and threats versus just going through kind of what they do, kind of see, um, what their self-assessment is in comparison to some of our larger strategic goals. Um, and with that, I think, uh, having sort of a, I think one of the things that we haven't had the opportunity to do as council is have a lot of open discussion about, um, vision and long-term planning and strategic planning, uh, and the existing plan versus what we need to be doing, and so I think a lot of, um, good discussion could come from that. Uh, and so, I'd like to see moving some of this strategic conversation of council moved up to that second, that April date, and so then you have the lines of business kind of feeding into this strategic discussion, seeing what's happening on the ground with regards to what's already been put in our strategic plans, and then kind of that dovetails well into us talking about our own individual visions. Um, and then that feeds directly into going into budget and saying, well, these are the strengths and weaknesses, the places we need to, um, concentrate as we go into budget season. That's my perspective on kind of the timing of it. Um, so, that's my comment.
I think it's anticipated though at this point, and it relates, I guess, what you're saying, Mr. Dellinger, is, um, council needs to, to, to weigh in on this proposed schedule and I guess the way to do that at this point would be to, uh, submit an email, perhaps copying other members on this in terms of what your preferences are, or confirm basically these dates, is that...
Yeah, it, it, they don't have to be these dates, but we were trying to give you a place to start the discussion, and so, um, yeah, it, if there was some mechanism to confirm those and if, you know, if you all want to shift the topics around, that would also be good, good feedback to have.
Yes. And we need to do that pretty quickly because some of these proposed for, for March.
We do. Yes, uh, that's right.
Okay. All right, all right. Let's see, Mr. Baggett, the attorney, do you have anything?
I have one other item. Um, I should have mentioned this early on in the meeting, but I do need a closed session for a potential property acquisition. Uh, shouldn't take long. Closed session for that.
Okay. Counsel, you heard that request, so we'll motion that in council reports, I guess. Mr. Baggett, you're up.
We continue to work with staff on some items, but nothing for the council.
Ah, okay. Well, thank you, sir. Sure enough. Um, I'll get to council members just a minute. I'm going to go ahead and just mention a couple of things under council reports. Uh, all of you should have at your desk a letter that was, uh, prepared and signed this week, having to do with, uh, Lieutenant of Garner being on record of, um, supporting, uh, the 540 project, uh, and the approval of an INFRA grant, uh, and so, just wanted you to, to be aware of that. Um, so, unless anybody has a question about that, we'll put that aside. Uh, the 2020 census is upon us and, uh, I know Rick Mercer's not in here, but, um, his, uh, his, his department is working on some public service announcements, uh, and some other things that, uh, we hope that will get the good word out to all of our, all of our residents here in town to remind them of the importance of this. Uh, hopefully the mayor will get a chance to, uh, weigh in on that as well. So, uh, as you have opportunity, remind those people you're in contact with of the importance of this census and of the importance of being counted. Um, and the town is already sort of partnering, I think, with the county, uh, some in its efforts, uh, to make sure we get the word out to everybody. Uh, and the only thing I'll just mention quickly and then I'll defer to council, uh, I think we had another successful Broadway presentation, um, it was part of our Broadway series, uh, this past Saturday evening. Had the privilege of being there and, uh, two outstanding entertainers, so, uh, council members, uh, for future, uh, performances, if you get a chance to come be a part of that, that'll be great, but, uh, successful evening, I believe. So, with that, uh, let's see, I'll start here with Ms. Behringer, you'll work my way that way and then work my way back this way.
Okay. Um, yes, sir, one of the items I had, um, I had spoken with Mr. Johnson about the lighting at South Station, and I believe he told me that he'd been in conversations with property manager and they planned to do something about the lighting to make it, to improve it. It's just extremely dark in that parking lot. I have not noticed any changes at all. There are also some lights that are out on Garner Station Boulevard, along that way, not terribly many, but within the parking lot, almost every pole has four lights, but only one working, and that is both immediately in the parking lot in front of, um, big lots and up behind the restaurants. It's just, it's almost scary, it's so dark. So, if we could have another conversation with that property manager and ask them what their intentions are and how quickly?
I know when Mr. Johnson updated you last, he had said that they were having trouble finding a contractor to do the work, and so, we'll find out if anything's changed with that, but, um, that was the update he gave last time.
Yeah, if we can encourage them to be a little more diligent about that. Um, and a question is, um, Forrest, is Public Works responsible for moving that gas station, um, platform? Well, thank you very much. Appreciate that. Uh, it looks very much better. It's not the eyesore that it was, uh, and would also like to find out if at this point, if we can push a little bit further and ask Public Work, not Public Work, excuse me, DOT to begin with, to clear away the brush in the back of that piece of property, or is that something that we will have to assume ourselves? I'm sure, but if we could ask them just for protocol's sake and then fix it anyway, but it's much better looking now. It's been many, many years we've been hearing complaints about that and now, now that, at least the metal is gone. So, thank you. Okay. Um, and that's all. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Mr. Vance?
Uh, yes, I was out visiting this past weekend with, uh, individuals on Duran Road and there's a home there that is currently not occupied, uh, and it's, uh, pretty grown up. Uh, the grass is pretty grown, weeds are out of control and plus there is the debris within the yard. It's quite obvious to be, uh, to, to, to see. I'm assuming we don't give addresses out, but I will direct it to the town manager as the, address and location of their home at the meeting. Uh, the another, the next item is that early, early voting has started, and early voting, uh, uh, will end on March 3rd, and just want to put that out as a public service announcement. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Vance. Mr. Dellinger?
I have nothing.
Uh, let's see, we've got a Ms. Singleton. Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Go back to Ms. Behringer.
Yeah, I overlooked one more thing. Uh, a few weeks ago, AT&amp;T, I believe it was, was doing some upgrades as far as their, um, whatever materials, uh, uh, on the, in the old Garner neighborhood, along Garner Road, and they, there are several places where they cut out squares of the pavement and have not completely replaced them and repaired them. Uh, they're not holes, but they're not finished, so if we could ask them to come back out and get those things finished.
Andrew, where, where was that location? I'm sorry, I didn't...
Uh, there's one on Penny Street, there were a couple down Garner Road. Most of them are in the east office into the neighborhoods. Uh, just neglected, I believe there's one at the corner of Creek Road and Garner Road in front of Ms. Cassius' house, but I'm not positive.
Okay.
Hey, Ms. Singleton?
Yes, um, we may talk about the employee breakfast. We, uh, I always remember our former colleague, Mr. Jones, he's the one who initiated doing that many years ago, so he also enjoyed cooking the pancakes. He had a lot of fun out of doing that and staying on top of things.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I'd like to ask the staff, we had the presentation by the consultant doing the Parks and Rec and Cultural Resources, uh, master plan, they came and made a presentation to us to begin with, uh, after they were selected by staff. Do we know the date of that? I'd like to get the date of that, and I don't know if it's, if it's 18, I'm assuming it is. I went back trying to find it in a meeting and I might, I don't know, but if someone, if y'all would just email me the date of that first presentation by the, uh, consultant.
Okay.
And they were here and we asked them some questions, they gave us information about the, the scope of the service and the work and so forth. I'd appreciate that.
Okay.
That's all I have, uh, for right now.
Okay. Mr. Matthews?
Nothing this time, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, all right. So, I believe that concludes all the elements on, I, I know we're going to, uh, ask for a closed session, but just before we do that, uh, I believe, unless any council member has another item that I've missed, hearing none, uh, let me see, can we get a closed session site for our...
Going to closed session under GS 143-318-point-11A5 to discuss possible real estate acquisition.
Okay. You've heard the site by the attorney and the reason for that. Is there a motion that we go into closed session at this time?
Some...
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. So, um, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. And if so ordered, we will retire to the closed session room and, um, begin our discussion.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, well, please come back to order. Um, the council went into closed session to briefly discuss some possible property acquisition and we gave staff some instruction moving forward, uh, otherwise we took no other action. Um, just before I ask for an adjournment, I believe the, uh, town manager wants to do a brief update.
Yeah, I'll give a brief update of where we are with the depot move. Um, of course, it's all been moved, the foundation's been built, uh, the moving contractors gotten all of their infrastructure out, the beams and things that were, um, holding it, holding it up until the foundation could be brought up. Um, they've stripped the building of all the siding, uh, did discover some, some wood, damaged wood, which we expected that, so that's going to have to be replaced. Uh, in preparation for the windows and, and doors, new windows and doors, they're going to be adding some, um, framing for support of some of the headers and studs on the side of the windows, which is a little different than, you know, this construction in the past, and, um, some damage to the roof, so that's going to take, um, a little more time to fix the, the roof damage on the standing seam roof, uh, but other than that, we, we still feel confident that it'll be, uh, it'll be finished this spring, so...
All right. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Anybody else have an item? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn.[1764.86]